If so, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you. What we'll do is we'll run through the agenda on a caucus basis and then we'll start the regular meeting. Items including up to departmental reports are pretty administrative and as a result, I don't believe anyone wants to comment on any of those. You're welcome to if you want, but if not, then we'll move to the communication from the mayor. Item number six, where she submits her budget for the year 2021 and it is on the unified tax basis, which will indicate indicates that it eliminates the homestead and non-homestead two tax tier. Any comments as to that?
Which one are you doing?
Six.
Just six?
Yeah.
Okay. Not six A? You didn't get there yet?
Didn't get to six A yet, no.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Strictly the mayor's proposed budget. Any comments on the mayor's proposed budget? Let's move to six A.
Yeah, you're going to table it, right?
I'm going to make a motion to table the budget till the next session, yeah.
Yeah, because.
We'll see if it passes.
Oh, it's fine.
Okay, item six A. This is the unified tax ordinance. Any comments? It's a unified tax rate of seventeen dollars and twenty-three cents per thousand. Any comments on that? All right, item six B. Repealing of the local law, which created a homestead and non-homestead differentiation in the two tax tier that we used for so many years in Lackawanna. Any comments on that?
We know what year that started, President.
It was the eight four eighty-five.
I'm sorry, what year?
Nineteen eighty-four, eight to eighty-five.
Anyone want to comment on that?
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Under B in the last line, it says it's replaced in its entirety, it's repealed.
Yeah, I was going to bring it. And it says amended in there too. We're not amending anything, right? We're just repealing it, right?
Yeah, it said just say repealing, yeah.
It's a local peeling and amending. We're not amending anything either, right?
Right.
And then it says replace, it should say repeal.
Right.
Right, I got I got that on my notes.
Are we referring to the actual are we referring to the actual ordinance on that?
No, just the agenda, I believe.
Yeah, I don't know if it matters on the agenda, it's kind of.
It's just a reference to the actual.
Let me look at the ordinance, but I don't think the ordinance said that.
No, the ordinance doesn't say that. The public doesn't have the ordinance.
Any more comments on that?
Yeah, I'd like to say something before we move on. I know it's easy to be negative and a naysayer, but I was all in on repealing this homestead and non-homestead differential tax rates before we were hit by these cruel and trying times due to this terrible COVID-19 virus. I've been elected twice by the residents of homeowners of the fourth ward. I feel that our ward will carry the heaviest burden due to our higher home values and are therefore our higher tax bills. After much thought and many restless nights, I feel it is in the best interest of the residents who elected me to vote no at this time. I hope and pray that I'm proven wrong and thank you, gentlemen, for letting me saying my piece here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Surtik. Anyone further want to address any of those issues?
Now, what about A? Mr. Judah? Six A. What do we do on there? Isn't that part of the budget?
That's that's going to be I'm going to make a motion to table that till the June first meeting.
Okay, that's all I want then.
Are you going to table everything?
No.
No.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to item seven, which was a letter from a former councilman Schultz to second second ward wherein he submitted his resignation. We'll just simply receive and file that when the time is appropriate. And of course, we like to take the time at this time to thank Ron for all of his efforts in serving the community of Lackawanna and in particular the second ward. I don't know if anyone else wants to address any comments to Ron.
I'd just like to say the same thing, to thank him for his guidance when I got on board and the help he gave me and his dedication to our city. The ball teams, stuff like that, he's done a great job, so. But I know he's he's got personal things and he's family comes first, so. Thank you, Ron.
And thank you, Councilman Moretti. All right, moving on to item number eight. We have a communication from the city comptroller who was present at the meeting. Carolyn, you want to give us a couple of minutes to address on this, more so for the public?
Sure, so each year, the city is limited as to how much tax we can actually levy. And so the office of the state comptroller has two tests, the constitutional tax limit and the tax cap. The constitutional tax limit, we cannot go over. If we do go over, they take away our state aid. The tax cap is, I guess in an easy way to say, it's a it's an alert to when we're getting close to the constitutional tax limit. And when they, in order to exceed this tax cap, the council needs to approve to exceed it. But it's based on the prior years, the calculation is the prior year's tax levy plus any pilots we receive and then there's a growth factor of one percent in there too. And if we go over that limit that is set, we just need an ordinance to exceed it or I'm sorry, local tax law, local law to exceed it.
And this has been done in the past, correct?
Correct. It's been about every two years or so we've done it.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Carolyn. Anyone wish to comment on item A, eight A? All right, moving on to item nine, communication from the fire chief, allowing the 2002 Chevy Suburban vehicle to be sold. Anyone wish to comment on that? It succeeded its years of service, apparently.
I just want to note that these are sold as is, right, Mr. Judah? There's no liability if somebody gets hurt on the stuff or?
I lost you for a minute.
Oh, sorry. As far as this, these old ladders in that way, they're just sold as is, there's no liability to the city if somebody gets hurt on them or anything like that, you know what I'm saying?
You know, personally, I wouldn't sell ladders, but if they're. I can't say that somebody gets hurt, if it's a broken ladder and it's being discarded for a reason and we sell it and somebody pays monetary, they pay for that, they're expecting a product, if they get injured on it, sure, we're risking ourselves to a lawsuit.
Maybe better just to destroy it, I don't know, I'm just.
What do we get for those?
I don't know.
Generally, gentlemen, generally, the ladders, the ladders get tested. If they don't pass the tests, they're generally discarded. We never, we've never sold them, okay? A ladder, it's a little different. The Suburban that they're talking about has been around for, you know, eighteen years and it's beat up pretty bad and that's what he's that's what he's selling. But the ladders, I don't think there's going to be, there's no sale on that.
Well, it says in, it says here that he wants to sell them.
Well, I would think there may be certain ladders that are qualified, he could probably sell and generally, usually some of the guys on the department end up buying them for their personal uses, so.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to look out for.
Yeah, I understand.
Future, and thanks for your input. I know you probably know more than I do, but.
But old wooden ladders and things of that nature are, you know, they usually destroy them.
Well, it says here to sell them. From my understanding, that the Suburban's only got fifty-two thousand on it and we might get somebody to buy it and use, you know, for to use the engine on it or something, so hopefully that works out. Thank you.
I'll talk to the fire chief as well and I'll recommend that they be sold for scrap, you know what I mean?
The ladders, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And just to note, as part of that request, any money generated is being asked to be to be placed in the fire department budget under code three, four, one, zero, point zero, four, four, three. All right, moving on to item ten, communication from DPW commissioner who was present at this evening's meeting, that the award for the work being done at Kalani Park restoration to Ochino Corporation in the amount of two hundred and three thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty cents. Commissioner DeSantis, do you have any, anything you might, any light you might shed particularly for the for the public? And what I'd like you to address is the concern, obviously, with the difficult times we're facing and the unsure revenues we might have coming in, that we're expending all this money on a park. Would you be able to shed some light on that?
Yeah, sure, so we have to secure a contractor for this project in order to get the grant money from the state parks. So actually, no money will come out of the city budget. It will be put back in and that the price of two hundred and three thousand dollars will be reduced because right now there is a DEC project going on that is going to be, they'll be doing some of the work that was supposed to be done with this grant money. So that two hundred and three thousand dollars, once the contractor gets the contract awarded, they'll be able to rebid, or they'll be able to re-scope the job and that price will come down.
We're not locked into the two hundred and three thousand, right?
No, we're not locked into it and when we get the exact number after this, after they go over the scope of work again, we're still not locked into it. If we don't like that number, we can rebid the project.
Okay, thank you, Tony. Anyone have any comments on that item? Okay, thanks again, Tony. Moving on to item eleven, communication from the city attorney relative to the address of twenty-eight hundred Haver Turnpike. There's an additional fire hydrant that was installed. If you recall, the last year we had had an address of thirty-nine, zero, four, South Park Avenue, that was an error, so we're being asked to approve the the cost of two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eight cents per year for annual maintenance. That's to pass that piece of legislation and rescind the prior resolution regarding three, nine, zero, four, South Park Avenue. Any comments on that? All right, moving on to item number twelve from the director of development. He has put in a considerable amount of time on revamping the fee list for the city of Lackawanna relative to various projects, whether it's reviewing plans, inspection of the projects, et cetera. There's a complete list of that, of those changes. I'd like to thank him, Richard Stanton, for doing that. Anyone wish to comment on this particular proposed ordinance? All right, moving on to item thirteen, again, from the director of development, requests permission in the form of a resolution regarding the updating of the citywide zoning code amendments. And I wasn't quite sure what he was asking in speaking with him earlier today and in reading the resolution, that's part of the package. It's actually asking permission to contact those agencies and entities that are responsible for the initial approvals to move this forward. So initially, I thought we were approving all of these changes to the zoning zoning code, but that apparently is not the case at this time. It's just giving him permission to move forward with the various approvals. Any questions on this item?
I have one, Council President.
Yes, sir.
Directed at Mr. Stanton. Rich, you and I spoke earlier regarding the language and how we're going to approve this and you gave me a blurb to read here. Now, is that related to item thirteen or item twelve that you gave me regarding the lead agency?
That's that's item thirteen and that was in the, that was in the resolution at the end. I wasn't so clear on the agenda, we noticed, I got it.
Okay, because you got here, it says environmental review of the proposed ordinance. Did that see a resolution?
No, no, the resolution, the resolution right now is to have me listed on behalf of the city council lead agency status and secondly, for me to start the county law two thirty-nine review. So there is a resolution on that. We're not adopting an ordinance would be, for us to actually adopt an ordinance at this point to get the environmental and the planning reviews.
So let me, let me read this and make sure it's correct so that when we do the agenda, when we do the actual meeting, that we got the right language here. Basically, you're saying direct the director of development on behalf of the city council to solicit lead agency for the environmental review of the proposed ordinance changes and initiate county law two thirty-nine dash M review. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so then we're going to be on item thirteen under A, where it says a resolution that amends the following sections of city code. That does not apply just the language that I just read? Or does that still apply with all the sections in the?
Well, when I read the the resolution that Richard proposed, in the resolved section of that resolution, it does indicate he's just going forward with the agency approvals. It would not be appropriate for us at this time, in my opinion, to pass a resolution amending any of these sections of the of the city code zoning ordinances. We just haven't had the time to review those. So if it's strictly, as I remember reading that resolution, giving Richard the authority to go forward with the approvals that he needs to seek in order to keep this project moving, that's, I'm in favor of approving that. But as far as a resolution changing any of these line items for the zoning code itself, I'm not in favor of voting on that at this time.
We can't even go that far, Council President, because as a seeker, you can't, until seeker's closed, we can't vote on this agent. This is just to start the seeker and two thirty-nine process. We cannot vote on the ordinance.
So you're saying we can't, we can't vote on this?
We can only vote on the resolution.
Okay.
Can't vote on adopting an ordinance.
Okay, so the second last paragraph of the resolution says, resolve that the director of development of the city is hereby directed to solicit lead agency status for the review of the proposed city code amendments. That's what we're going to be approving.
Yes.
Okay, and that's what I'll, that's what we'll say when the, when the regular agenda's read. I just want to make sure we're right on that.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone have any comments or questions on that issue? Richard, again, I'd like to thank you for your efforts on in this area. It's, I know it's a lot of work and I saw the amount of work we were doing on that, so thank you again.
Welcome.
Great initiative, thank you. All right. Last item is item fourteen, it was communication from Amanda Huxell, who contacted me and I believe sent a letter to our city clerk regarding wanting to come in and address and promote tobacco-free communities in the Lackawanna area. I think it's a great initiative by this young, this young lady and although time, the times being what they are, wouldn't allow us to meet with her and have her make a presentation at this time, maybe sometime in the future when the pause is lifted, we'll invite her to have, to come to a city council meeting and make that presentation. Anyone want to comment on this request?
I would briefly, Mr. President. I spoke with this young lady a couple of days ago and pretty much echoed your sentiments. This is something that when we're able to host her at a live meeting, we could have her come in. She wanted to do something on one of the playgrounds at a fairly shortly upcoming date and it just didn't seem like the time to be hosting any kind of a public gathering, but I told her that we definitely encourage her to come up and speak to us and we would be open to helping her in any way that we could.
Great, Brian, thank you. And for those at home, I was our director of park and recreation, Brian Laxum. Thank you, Brian. And then obviously, that just leaves a, a motion to adjourn. Any other items, anyone wish to raise at this time? If not, we'll go into our regular meeting.
Is there any old business?
There's none that I see here.
What about the property on Ingham? Was it, is it?
I believe there was a, a meeting that was requested from the new owner. I don't know what the status of that is.
It's old business.
Well, I'm sure there's, it's not the only old business.
No, no, I'm just bringing it up because we talked about it last time and we were supposed, I thought we were supposed to get a little report more this time.
Rick, is there anything new on that?
No. Okay. I will next time, though.
Okay. Am I accurate, there's, there was a request for a meeting?
I believe there was, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
We'll know more the next time.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Davis, while you will call the meeting in order and would you take over, please?
All right, as we start the regular meeting, as we know, we already participated in the Pledge of Allegiance, it's time for the roll call. Council Ingram.
Here.
Moretti.
Here.
Surtik.
Present.
Morano.
Present.
Law.
Present.
Development.
Here.
Public Works.
Here.
Public Safety.
Here.
Comptroller.
Here.
Recreation.
Here.
All right, as a reminder, all these meetings are being recorded, obviously, with Facebook Live, that's a no-brainer. We move on to hearings from citizens. As you know, our policy has been to take any comments the public has for any agenda items to send them to my email inbox as of noon of the day of the meeting and as of today at noon, we have not received any inquiries, comments, or questions from the public. So that being said, we'll move right to the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May sixth, 2020.
Morano moves to drop, to adopt the minutes as written.
Ingram, second.
A motion by Morano, second by Ingram, to adopt minutes as written. Ingram.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surtik.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Period four, zero. Departmental reports, one through five.
Morano moves to receive and file departmental reports, one through five inclusive.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file departmental reports, one through five. Ingram.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surtik.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Period four, zero. Communications from the mayor, number six. Mayor Iafalo submits the annual budget message to the city council and communication requesting the city council to repeal article nineteen, particularly section nineteen oh three of the real property tax law, which reestablishes a unified tax rate to ensure Lackawanna's economic future and to attract new business to the city. The mayor is also requesting city council approve the attached budget ordinance and local law. And just, just for the record, agenda item eight A and six B, if the budget was being addressed tonight by vote, would have to be addressed prior to six A.
Thank you, Jeff. Morano moves to receive and file a communication and act on the ordinance and local law.
Ingram, second.
We have a motion by Morano, second by Ingram, to receive and file act on ordinance and local law. Ingram.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surtik.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Period four, zero. Six A, an ordinance adopting the current expense budget of the city of Lackawanna for fiscal year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. The sum of twelve million, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars being the entire amount determined to be necessary to be raised by taxation to defray the expense of the city for twenty twenty-one fiscal year with a unified tax rate of seventeen dollars and twenty-three cents of assessed valuation.
Morano moves to table the budget ordinance pending adoption of local law number two, including signature by the mayor.
Moretti, second.
We have a motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to table the budget ordinance pending adoption of local law number two. Ingram.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surtik.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Period four, zero. Six B, a local law rescinding chapter two, zero, one, article four of the Lackawanna City Charter and known as the homestead and non-homestead tax or base proportions. That chapter two, zero, one, article four, section two, zero, one, sixteen through two, zero, one, dash nineteen of the Lackawanna City Charter entitled Homestead and Non-Homestead Base Proportions is hereby replaced in its entirety.
Morano moves to adopt local law number one as written.
Ingram, second.
We have a motion by Morano, second by Ingram, to adopt local law number one as written. Ingram.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surtik.
No.
Morano.
Yes.
Period three to one. Communications from the council, number seven. Council member Schultz submits letter to city council resigning his position as second ward council member as of May eleventh, two thousand twenty.
Morano moves to receive and file and to thank Ron for his serving as second ward councilman.
Moretti, second.
A motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file. For the record, the council thanks former council member Ron Schultz for his contributions to the city of Lackawanna. Ingram.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surtik.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Period four, zero. Communications from division department heads, number eight. City comptroller requests city council approve the attached local law to allow the city of Lackawanna to exceed the property tax cap for the fiscal year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one as prescribed, excuse me, as prescribed in general municipal law section three C.
Morano moves to adopt local law number two as written.
Ingram, second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Morano, second by Ingram, to receive and file act on local law number two. Ingram.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surtik.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Period four, zero. Eight A, a local law authorizing a property tax in excess of the limit established in general municipal law section three C. The city council of the city of Lackawanna, County of Erie, is hereby authorized to adopt a budget for the fiscal year commencing August first, two thousand twenty, that requires a real property tax levy in excess of the amount otherwise prescribed in general municipal law section three C. The local law shall take effect immediately upon filing with the Secretary of State.
Morano moves to adopt local law number two as written.
Ingram, second.
We have a motion by Morano, second by Ingram, to adopt local law number two as written. Ingram.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surtik.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Period four, zero. Number nine, fire chief requests city council approve the selling of the following old fire department vehicle and equipment. The vehicle to be sold is a two thousand two Chevy Suburban, as it can no longer be used for fire department services because of safety issues. The equipment to be sold includes ladders, more than twenty-five years old and no longer serve the fire department due to their age and condition. I am asking for permission to destroy any unsold items. In addition, the chief is requesting the city council approve the funds received from the sale of the list, the listed items to be placed in fire department budget code A thirty-four, ten dot zero, four, four, three, to cover the cost of maintenance on our service apparatus.
Morano moves to approve requests.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to approve requests. Ingram.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surtik.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Period four, zero. Number ten, DPW commissioner requests the city council award the bid for the Kalani Park Restoration Project to Ochino Corporation in the amount of two hundred and three thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty cents. Bids received. in the amount of $203,193.50. Bids received are attached.
Morano moves to approve request.
Second, Sirdike.
We have a motion by Morano, second by Sirdike, to approve request. Ingram.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried 4-0. Number 11, City Attorney, there is an additional fire hydrant installed at 2800 Hamburg Turnpike. I request the city council, please approve the attached resolution authorizing the yearly maintenance fee in accordance with the city's existing water authority contract, WSA-014. The cost is approximately $229.08 per year for the annual maintenance fee. In addition, I request the city council rescind the prior resolution for the installation of a hydrant at 3904 South Park Avenue.
Morano moves to receive and file Act on Attached Resolution and rescind prior resolution pertaining to the hydrant at 3904 South Park Avenue.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file Act on Attached Resolution and rescind prior resolution pertaining to the hydrant at 3904 South Park Avenue. Ingram.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried 4-0, the attached resolution, whereas the city council authorizes the addition of an additional fire hydrant at 2800 Hamburg Turnpike to its existing water authority contract, WSA-014, and agrees to pay the annual maintenance fee to the Erie County Water Authority in accordance with the current contract, WSA-014.
Morano moves to adopt resolution as written.
Ingram, second.
A motion by Morano, second by Ingram, to adopt resolution as written. Ingram.
Yes.
Morano. Or I'm sorry, Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried 4-0. Number 12, Director of Development, requests the city council approve the attached ordinance revising the city permit fee schedule. It has been determined that the city fee schedule does not cover the cost of reviewing plans and inspecting projects, and we have further determined that the city's fee schedule is substantially lower than that of surrounding municipalities. For the record, for the record, if anybody would like to see a complete copy of the proposed fee schedule and compare it to the other municipalities, it is on file in my office.
Moves to receive and file and act on ordinance.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file Act on Ordinance. Ingram.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried 4-0, the associated ordinance amending Chapter 75-16, Building Code Administration of the City of Lackawanna Municipal Code, specifically the permit fee schedule, together with the penalties to work before, to work performed without a permit.
Morano moves to adopt ordinance as written.
Ingram, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Ingram, to adopt ordinance as written. Ingram.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried 4-0, number 13. The Director of Development requests the city council, as per the power pursuant to New York General City Law, Section 20, review and approve the attached resolution regarding citywide zoning amendments to regulate the use of land within and the area restrictions of said land usage. And again, a complete copy of the citywide zoning amendments are on file in my office.
Morano moves to receive and file Act on the resolution.
Moretti, second.
We have a motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file Act on Resolution. Ingram.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Okay, and for the record, the resolution on the agenda is not what we're voting on. The voting that the council will take will read as follows. Basically, it says that the Director of Development on behalf of the city council is hereby directed to solicit lead agency status for the review of the proposed city code amendments for the common council, should say city council, and circulate the full environmental assessment form and contents of the proposed ordinance amendments to all involved and interesting, interested agencies. It is further resolved that the Director of Development of the city is hereby directed to initiate the General Municipal Law 239-M review of the proposed ordinance.
Morano moves to adopt resolution as written.
Ingram, second.
We have a motion by Morano, second by Ingram, to adopt resolution as written. Ingram.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
4-0, carried 4-0, communications from citizens, number 14. Amanda Huxell, Program Manager, Reality Check for Erie Niagara County, requesting to meet with the city council after the COVID-19 pandemic to promote tobacco-free communities and policies surrounding the tobacco retail environment and advertising retail density regulations and tobacco-free outdoors.
Morano moves to receive and file and arrange a meeting when deemed safe to do so.
Moretti, second.
We have a motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file. Meeting to be arranged when deemed safe to do so, post-COVID-19, obviously. Ingram.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried 4-0. Under Old Business, Councilman Sirdike brought up during the caucus the issue with the properties on Ingham, and the Law Department stated he'll have some answers at the June first meeting. Correct, Rick?
Correct.
Okay, and, Mr. Council President.
Unless there's anything further, a motion to adjourn is in order. Morano, so moves.
Mr. Council President, can I say one more thing, please? Kevin Sirdike, thank you. I'd just like to give a shout out to the Lackawanna Patriots Club, which I'm a member of, and our officer just voted to donate $1,000 to the Lackawanna Food Pantry, so I just want to give a shout out to all the Patriot Club members in Lackawanna. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Well done. I renew my motion to adjourn.
Second by Moretti.
We have a motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to adjourn meeting. Ingram.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried 4-0, I would just like to say to the public in closing